It's a good question. I don't know that I can answer it. A lot of states have challenges. All states have challenges with poverty. I don't know if I could say one state does it best.
Hopefully by the end it'll give me.
I don't think we'll ever fix poverty.
Representative person.
Thank you, Senator. I don't mean this as like negative, but I just have to ask it. If welfare fraud in TANF is like less than 1 percent, how much are we actually going to be saving? Especially if we're hiring, if you want to hire more people to investigate. Like, I'm just a little lost on that concept. So can you address that for me?
I think a big portion of what state government does is enforcement. And enforcement costs money. The biggest cost is personnel. And I think with eight fraud investigators that were hired a couple of years ago, something like $800,000. It's a cost for one year and they return something like $150,000 in benefits that we use fraud against. So this definitely costs money. But I think many people would say this is something maybe not worth tons to respect. It's a good point. Could be debated. Massachusetts has a very extensive list of prohibited items. I could provide you the list of all the items they prohibit. I didn't include all of them.
We posted you, I mean fines, I can understand, but bail was... Seems like...
It's a challenge.
I understand.
Any additional questions for Senator Libby? Representative Hammond.
Thank you. This might just be a technical question. Maybe not. It limits what people can use their benefits to purchase, such as tobacco products. Is that only if they use it as a card? Or do they take out the 25 percent in cash? Does it prevent them from using that cash to buy back cigarettes?
Practically speaking, I would say I don't know how you prohibit somebody from purchasing something with cash.
So there's a little forcibility issue. Technically, that would be illegal. So if one of these fraud investigators had missed that, it's my habit. They wash up and buy back cigarettes. Technically, it'd be sentient, but the forcibility is probably...
I mean, how does the shopkeeper know when someone comes up to pay with cash? Whether that's...
You can see cash.
Any additional questions? See no additional questions? Thank you very much, Senator Libby. Next, I'm going to hand the gavel over to my co-chairman for a very short period of time.
Good afternoon, Senator.
Oh, wow.
Such a good to see you again.
I never get into this committee. It's wonderful to be here. I'm Senator Eric Braeke. I represent the people of Auburn, New Gloucester, Poland, mine at McKinnon Falls. I'm here today to present LD 816, an Act to Reform Welfare and Eliminate the Welfare Cliff. If you look at the back of this, this is a concept rap without any particular proposals. I put this in as a placeholder to make sure we had a vehicle to discuss this topic. I'm very grateful that there appear to be at least two different bills that do address this topic with some particular proposals. So there's two ways we can proceed on this bill. We could either vote "ought not" to pass on this bill, or we could take other people's ideas and put them in here. So I could take credit for that. But anyway, I'll leave it to the committee to decide. I'll probably myself vote "ought not" to pass, but...
Senator, I know you're not about this, but you know the credit.
I'm happy to take any questions.
I guess we'll go to the podium, Representative Gattin.
I will not be quite as brief. Senator Braeke, colleagues on the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. My name is Tru Gattin. I represent House District 34, which, as you all know, is part of the city of Westbrook, the south side, as I mentioned today. I'm pleased to present LD 1268, An Act to Reform Welfare by Building Bridges to Sustainable Employment. I'm extremely excited to be bringing this bill before the committee today because I really do think it has the potential to make positive and constructive change in how we help people move out of poverty and into a prosperous future. We talk a lot inside and outside of this committee room about how we must reform and refocus our public programs to support work and give people a hand up. Well, this bill does just that. This bill sets a high bar. It doesn't seek to simply move people into their first low-wage job. It looks ahead and focuses on the future by seeking to capitalize on the potential of hard-working Maine people and maximizing their chances of success when they get into the workforce. It seeks to break the cycle of poverty that traps good Maine people. This is, in many respects, a jobs bill. This is a bill about making sure that people at the low end of the economic ladder, people in poverty, have an opportunity to participate in our recovering economy. Moving people from poverty into sustainable employment needs to be a core goal of the overall economic agenda, not just the human services agenda. Maine cannot claim that our economy is on the road to recovery unless things are improving for people across the spectrum, including people in poverty and with low-wage jobs. This bill does not start from scratch, but builds upon and leverages ongoing efforts by the administration and previous legislatures that deserve our strong support. It is the natural successor of the Ticket to Work Bill passed in the 126th legislature and the Department of Health and Human Services' Assessments of Job Readiness that we've talked about in this committee room. In order to understand why this bill is so important, you need to understand what the face of poverty looks like and what the challenges are that low-income Mainers face. Even as Maine's economy has slowly recovered from the Great Recession, things have not improved for people at the bottom of our economy. And some key statistics tell the story. Maine's poverty level is over 20 percent higher than the rest of New England. Over 20 percent of Maine children under the age of five live in poor families. Over 35 percent of single-parent families live in poverty. And even among working people, poverty has become more of a reality. The number of people employed grew in Maine from 2010 to 2013, but the number of people employed still living in poverty grew much faster. The number of people working full-time but living under the poverty line grew by 11 percent since 2010. And the number of people working part-time but living in poverty grew by 13 percent. And my point is that we can't simply focus our welfare-to-work efforts on moving poor people into jobs that will leave them poor. That's not a hand-up. That's simply washing our hands of a problem. Real welfare reform needs to map a path to success and sustainability. It needs to provide as much support as possible during those first few months of work when people, some of whom have never been successful in the workforce before, are really getting on their feet. It needs to help map a route for the future to employment and skills training that will provide a prosperous future. So what does this bill do specifically? First of all, it alleviates the impact of the welfare cliff. The welfare cliff is basically a penalty for work. When families fall off the cliff, they lose benefits that are more valuable than the amount that they are earning. The cliff impacts families while income is still way below poverty. This bill eliminates the gross income test and allows a family to realize the full value of their paycheck for the first two months and a greater percentage going forward. Second, it supports families in their efforts to access reliable and affordable childcare. Access to childcare is a huge barrier to the ability of low-income families to be successful in the workforce. Parents moving from welfare to work are eligible for childcare under the Childcare and Development Block Grant. But working families wait for weeks, sometimes months, for eligibility determinations. Even worse, unlike other benefits, childcare benefits are not provided retroactively to the date of application. That means that people moving into jobs start off with childcare debt that they can't afford. This bill will alleviate the problem by making those benefits retroactive to the date of application. Third, it charges the department with convening a group to find and develop affordable transportation solutions. Access to reliable and affordable transportation is another significant factor that is preventing people from succeeding in work. Yet almost half of the TANF families in Maine do not have access to a car. Other states are ahead of us in responding to this problem, and the work group is charged with looking at what those states are doing. Fourth, this bill looks to the future. As stated above, it does not simply cut people off in support once people move into their first low-wage job. It establishes a navigator system within the department to help people understand the supports that are available to them and how earned income impacts their eligibility and access to benefits. It also requires the department to collaborate with the Department of Labor and the university system to establish structured pathways for post-secondary education leading to skilled, good-paying jobs. We all recognize that the path to success in today's economy requires education and training, and a real welfare-to-work initiative has to support that effort. So real reform will improve Maine's economy. Investments in families and workers today will solidify our workforce for the future. It will improve the lives of Maine people and contribute to the strength of Maine's communities and our economy. I'm pleased that there seems to be momentum in this area. It's truly a place where we can find common ground to achieve real, lasting reform. I was very excited to understand this morning that the governor has introduced his bill and we refer to this committee today. I think it is wonderful that this committee is going to have a couple of bills to talk about, and I'm very excited to learn more about the governor's bill. And again, I think that what that shows is that, you know, people who are traditionally not always in agreement around these issues have recognized that this is a problem. It truly needs to be solved. And I'm hoping that this committee, as it often does, can come together and craft something that works for everyone. So if you have to take any questions.
Thank you, Representative Gattin. Questions for Representative Gattin?
I have one question, and I know we haven't seen the governor's bill from the committee yet, so maybe it's... I don't know if we want to get comparing... I'm going to ask anyway. I know one of the... So there's a lot of overlapping pieces of this, which is great. It sounds like there are a lot of places where there's... We're going to... People create minds, think alike, right? I know one of the points that has been raised, aside from the differences between the bills, was the, I guess, the work... I'm not sure what language to use now, but the work requirements around continuing to qualify, whether it be 20 hours a week or so on and so forth. I guess my question is, and we'll hash these out when we got both bills in front of us. If there's something like that, is that in fitting with the spirit of your bill? Do you think that's a worthwhile thing to consider as a piece of this as we look on crafting these two items?
I mean, again, you know, I have not done an analysis of the governor's bill in a side-by-side comparison. Again, I want to... Ms. Luss spoke to me briefly last week, and I appreciate the fact that she did that. Again, I think my bill is intended to reward people for working, and it's definitely intended to not penalize people for working. You know, again, I am really going to hesitate to try to draw, you know, what looks like, you know, lines in the sand or points of division before we get these two bills. Because again, I think that we really need to build from what I think is momentum to solve this problem. So again, you know, I'm not going to stand here today and say that there's anything specific about the governor's bill that's better or worse, or anything about my bill that's better or worse than the governor's. We're going to have a lot of testimony today. With your testimony, I assume we're going to have a public hearing and short order on the governor's bill. And then I think we're going to roll up our sleeves in this committee and try to solve a really big problem.
Absolutely. Okay, great. Any additional questions for Representative Gattin? See no additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's the end of our sponsors on these bills. So now, you know, I did say prior that we would take those four, those against, those nine to four in order, against. But because there are so many proposals, I wonder if it might just be easier to whichever one you are doing, we're just going to go in the order that we have people signed up, rather than trying to someone coming up, "Well, I'm for this one, but against this one." So we'll figure out which column I should be in. Now, let's start with Julie Rubenowitz of Maine Department of Labor. Ms. Rubenowitz here. No?
Good afternoon, Senator Braeke.
Welcome.
Representative Gattin, members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Sam Adolphson. I'm the chief operating officer at the Department of Health and Human Services. I'm going to testify on two bills today, 1097 and 1144. Beth Ham is going to be testifying on one additional bill. I will start with 1097. The department is in support of LD 1097. The TANF program certainly is meant to assist needy families to care for their children and to promote work in order to reduce dependency on government assistance. Because federal TANF funds are issued in block grants, states are allowed flexibility in how they administer the program. We're also responsible for ensuring the program integrity of those TANF funds. We believe, I think, as we've heard from a number of people already today, that spending TANF dollars on things like alcohol, tobacco, lottery tickets, gambling, or other inappropriate uses should be strictly prohibited. That kind of spending is contrary to the goals of TANF, and taxpayers should not be asked to flip the bill for those types of things. So the efforts in this particular bill, 1097, are a complement to existing state and federal rules and regulations around this already that limit where TANF funds are able to be accessed. There are other efforts ongoing. For instance, the department has disabled ATMs in certain gambling locations and liquor stores. So this is kind of augmenting a number of things that are already in existence to protect these funds. On the limiting the amount of cash, I've spoken to this committee already on another bill about that, and there will be a provision in the governor's bill as well that you'll hear about. We're certainly in support of that concept. I talked with you previously about some things, such as the data we are seeing with cash being withdrawn at curious times, in the middle of the night. And I also talked with you about the ability for the department to make a direct vendor payment for such things as rent that some might see as a reason for not limiting the cash. So I will leave that piece at that. The other area here, Maine EBT cards being used outside of the state. Senator Libby referenced Minnesota, which I do in my testimony as well, their recent bill to limit EBT expenditures to only bordering states. I think the important thing here is that while we look at EBT use outside of Maine and we investigate that use to make sure that those people are in fact Maine residents, that's a pay-and-chase kind of approach. And what we'd like to see is a front-end measure that would make sure only Maine residents are receiving the benefit. And then finally, on LD 1097, we are in support of adding five additional fraud investigators. And I want to tell you just a little bit about that unit. The fraud staff was doubled in 2011. We have 17 fraud investigators across the state of Maine. It's a large state, as you know. We have one fraud investigator responsible for all of Hurst County. And most of these fraud investigations include visiting the home, visiting a reported workplace, that kind of thing. So there's an extensive amount of travel that goes on. We have, since doubling the number of fraud investigators, dramatically increased the cases investigated and referred and prosecuted in the AG's office. 10 cases were referred in 2010. And last year, we referred 81 cases to the Attorney General's office. So we have definitely seen a major uptake with the new investigators. I will also tell you, there were more than 4,000 tips to our department in 2014 of reported welfare fraud by the public and various entities. Our 17 investigators cannot investigate 4,000 tips a year. So we certainly can use the additional staff. In addition to investigating those reports and referrals, our fraud investigators also look at intentional program violations, which are not the cases that don't qualify as criminal, but are in fact welfare fraud. That amounts to hundreds of cases a year. We already have 147 intentional program violations in the first quarter in 2015. So there are big caseloads with these investigators. We've got a big state geographically, and it would be extremely helpful to have more investigators in that unit. That's my testimony on 1097.
So we're at time. But my first question for you is, what can you tell us about the department's position on 1144?
I can tell you that we are opposed, and that is mainly because we believe that the majority of the bill is unnecessary. In particular, the education of TANF recipients is ongoing and extremely robust. It includes everything from a form they sign, when they apply, comprehensive orientation. Right on the card they get on the back is a listing of places they cannot use the card. We've made changes to our website. Very extensive notification and education of clients on what they can and cannot use their card for. One area we disagree strongly with on this bill is the penalties. It actually weakens, dramatically weakens, the existing penalties for misuse of benefits. Right now, the first offense is one year, being off the program for violation. And I believe in the senator's bill, that's reduced to a warning. So we're certainly against that particular portion. And then the last portion of the bill is basically a report back to the committee. And all those numbers that are asked for in the bill, we're happy to provide you. I just listed off a number of them around the number of referrals and intentional program violations. So that's why we're opposed to 1144. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So jumping back to 1097. So some of the questions were raised about... So some of these... So we're going to have the question of, so there's three different proposals around cash and EBT cards. We've got a proposal in here, which is at 25 percent. The proposal in the governor's bill is 15 percent. And we've got the cashless proposal, which is another bill to consider. I guess as far as... So we've talked about the ways we can make the cashless system work. Could you tell us about what it would take to make a system work where we are limited, capping it at a percentage? How easily that can happen?
Sure. It's just a technical change. It's not difficult. It will require a change on the vendor. We'll have to make a change in the system. So that current system is operated entirely by a third-party vendor. That has Xerox, if you're interested. And we would request that may change in the system where each month, the amount that's loaded as TANF cash will be restricted to 15 percent for a withdrawal. That's something they can do.
Okay. And I know one of the differences between the governor's proposal we just heard and 1097 on the using TANF funds out of state. I guess this proposal allows folks to use New Hampshire where they're supposed to. Does the department have any, I guess, any particular opinion one way or the other on that?
Yeah, we believe it should be used only inside Maine. But what we're expressing with this bill is that we're certainly in favor of the concept of restricting it. And I will tell you, I have seen all the data with my own eyes, and it's not limited just to New Hampshire by any stretch. These funds are spent in every single state in the country. So we're certainly supportive of limiting it. And I believe that you'll hear more about that in the governor's bill.
Great, great. Additional questions from the committee? Senator Castle?
Thank you very much. I just want to follow up on the ATM piece again. That's an EBT card, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And it has other benefits besides TANF benefits, aren't it?
Yes, it could also have SNAP, a new SNAP type of...
Yes, well... So would you... And this is for the work session. Wouldn't you have to send each month that amount to your provider, your card provider, for each individual, for them to load it into that, correctly into that card?
Yes, each month, they get a file with the appropriate benefit amount for each individual. They already receive that. So let's say, for example, if we pass the law saying only 15 percent can be withdrawn as cash, they would just apply that SNAP to the system, and it would stop...
But the rest of that is on a monthly basis? And on a monthly basis, you provide that?
Correct.
Okay. When you talked about fraud, those were all recipient fraud. Is there any provider fraud or any of your folks working with, perhaps, providers? And what's that percentage recipients to providers that you're looking at?
Yes, that's a good question. We have another unit that specifically looks at Medicaid providers, and that's a little bit different than the member fraud we're talking about. We also, within that unit of 17 investigators, have several ongoing investigations of retailers, mostly around the SNAP program. That's made a little difficult by the fact that that's overseen more directly by the federal government. So the state cannot disqualify a SNAP retailer. So although we often will investigate and build a case, it's ultimately up to the federal government to pursue that case and see it through to prosecution.
Thank you. And the third question that I have is just, there was some reference here to the state being out of compliance significantly in a number of areas. And I guess I would like to have a sense of what that was for the work session.
Okay, I'd be happy to just quickly answer. That is mainly related to the work participation rate that the state has required. And I believe you will hear more about that as well in other testimonies.
I would be interested in the numbers, what the dollars are, and what the miss is, by what percentage, and it would...
Representative Hammond? Then we'll do Representative... So we're going to go back and forth. So Representative Hammond, Representative Hines, Representative Bash, Representative...
Absolutely.
Sam, did you mention that there are 17 total fraud investigators currently? How much are we spending on that?
I can give you the exact number. I would say strictly on personnel, you're probably, we're probably budgeted with all the benefits and everything somewhere in the 60,000 to 80,000 range each, and then times 17. There are some other incidental costs that go with that, but I can give you the exact number.
Okay, thank you. And I guess last year, how much money did they recover from the investigation?
There are a number of different areas where they recover, including criminal fraud and intentional program violations. I can tell you that this year, in 2015, in the first quarter, it was 848,000 in established intentional program violations. Not all of that will be recovered. In fact... In fact, typically, we recover only a percentage, a small percentage relative to what is established as an overpayment, because there are various restrictions, mostly federal restrictions on how much we can require to get back from the individual. It's typically, the amount you recover is most often offset from their future benefit.
Okay. So that's 25,000. How much was that?
I can give you all those numbers for the work session.
What was that, Heinsohn?
Thank you. I don't just think about this operationally. So the 75% that gets run through a machine, who's looking at that? Who's going to sit there and look at everything that comes out?
Sure. That falls on those fraud investigators. We have kind of teams within teams that do data mining and look at a number of different available data sets. For instance, there's a group of data that's put together collectively by a number of states to see if people are receiving benefits in two states. So that team made up of fraud investigators will regularly check that to make sure that people aren't on that list. So they would be the ones that would go down through those and see if there are red flags for fraud.
So that task, does that offset another task? I imagine that what you want to do is to try to improve the ability to upfront, you know, you talked about that. You don't want to chase people, you want to take away the ability to do something to add to it. Do you think that that will take away some kind of task that they're doing now to more efficiently? Or will we need to add a lot more people to look at that 75% that comes out of the card?
We will do that with the staff we have now. Certainly, as I mentioned, if we, in the future, if you have additional staff dedicated to the fraud investigations, it would certainly increase their ability to both find more red flag-type suspicious activity and then follow up with a fraud investigation. We've got a large caseload now, and we do our best to get to the cases, and we certainly continue to do that, do that change.
I think somebody asked for numbers about that large caseload. What does that really mean? Does that mean the 4,000 people who are, who give you tips or the things you actually collect?
Sure. So the 4,000 tips, there are some that, upon a brief investigation, can be dismissed, and then there are hundreds and thousands that we have to follow up on with a further investigation. And what we've done with only 17 fraud investigators is really tried to prioritize their work for cases that are, have very good facts to them, much like you see in any law enforcement agency, we just have to prioritize and invest as early as we can.
Representative Bashon?
For the work session, I was wondering if you could see what the fines have been for noncompliance? And then I'm going to ask you my question that I've been asking everybody else. Benchmarking with regards to model states, is there a particular state that you've looked at, and specifically the successful welfare-to-work programs in states? Sometimes we envision in a work session that maybe you could have a chart of what different states are doing. So the welfare to work and also avoiding the welfare cliff in getting that back to work, is there any particular state that the state of Maine looks to for inspiration?
Yeah, that's a good question. I would say Wisconsin certainly is at the top of that list, and that goes back a long time. That's not only recently. They had some very good reforms back in the 90s, particularly around welfare-to-work, and they did in fact have an upfront work search requirement. Michigan does a very good job with their fraud, and we've talked with them time and again, because they have very good ideas. So for some reason, those Midwestern states seem to have some good practices. So those are two. Florida has undergone quite a reform on some different things related to welfare, so we've looked at Florida as well. But really, it's scanning across the whole country and finding those ideas in other states that have worked out well and have their goals accomplished.
Representative Stocky?
Thank you, Senator. Sam, you made reference earlier to the, in reference to the penalties that were in Representative McCabe's bill, being actually lightening up on them. What are the current penalties?
Yeah, so the current penalties, it's one year for the first offense. Now, this is an established intentional program violation. One year off the program for the first offense, two years for the second offense, and then permanent removal from the program for the third offense.
And one of the things, thinking of all of the testimony I've heard so far, I've heard a deafening silence around the word "children," which I think is the purpose of the program, really. So when you say one year off the program, do you make a referral to child protective in that instance?
Yeah, I would say a couple of things. There's a lot of crossover between these families and those in child welfare, and we absolutely make referrals when that's appropriate. The other thing I would say is if we're sanctioning you for a year because you're buying booze with your TANF benefit, I'm guessing the money's not making it to the kid anyway. And so that's part of the issue, is if you're continuing to use these benefits inappropriately, instead of them going to your child, they're going to the casino, then you're not going to get them anymore.
So I understand.